Okay, call your order. Patrick.
Here.
Russell.
Here.
Dolly.
Here.
Kawa.
Here.
Gordon. Okay, do you need a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Would it be better?
What?
I'm thinking a lot of this could culminate with Chip. Would it be better to reverse this order at all? I'm just asking.
What do you want to do?
I'm just saying to you, five four three instead of three four five. Or a better word.
I'm open for whatever you want to do.
Chip, financially, does it matter?
What's your perspective? You know, I'll say this, I can be brief, so, but I'll follow the wish the council and the mayor to in what order it is.
Is, are we in front of Chip? Is that what the? No.
No, okay, Chip.
Oh, okay.
What's your thinking on this thing?
I'm just thinking if Chip's presentation is going to include, you know, some sort of budgetary reason or some sort of budget friendly way of, you know, trying to include ones and needs of our PD, I'm just wondering if.
You want to hear the ones and needs first?
Yeah, I'm, does that make sense or not make sense? Does it, does it make sense for us to hear from Warren first and then the cops and then Coleman with Chip?
Sure.
There's some growing out.
Wait. I'll do that.
Go ahead.
Chip.
Start this side. We have a motion on the approval of his agenda, we've got capacity.
Yep.
Two seconds. Second one. Who's everything?
Ah, you go. Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
Yes.
Kawa?
Yep.
Okay, Warren?
Do you want to go over here?
I don't, you don't have a microphone.
I'll speak out.
Oh, there you go.
I'll be very brief, because I think the rationale has both been discussed in various public meetings and I think will be better summarized by the police department. But the primary reason I wanted to get on your agenda, my wife drafted a petition that we stuck out in front of our office and a couple of local businesses put it out on their counter. And it just says, "We, the undersigned, implore the Stewart City Council, Mayor and City Administrator, to find the resources necessary to keep our current police force intact by providing competitive salaries, overtime, medical leave and vacation pay, and by funding vehicles, equipment, training and other reasonable needs so the department can do its job to keep our community safe. We support the addition of a fifth officer, which will enable the school resource officer role at the West Central Valley Schools to continue." And we had this out between the 10th and the 19th today and collected 117 signatures, mostly citizens, taxpayers and other interested people. Both the Adair County Attorney and the Assistant Government Attorney are on the petition. I also, I signed up to speak as, on behalf of our business, our little office. But we did have a seat meeting this morning. And both from our perspective as a taxpaying business in this community and as somebody who's committed to the growth and prosperity of this community, primarily through volunteer work that I've done in the past with Midwest Partnership and currently with Stewart Enterprise for Economic Development. One of our key projects has been building the workforce, building the tax base of this community by providing workforce housing. For years and years and years, we heard what was holding rural communities back is a lack of workforce and housing was a key issue. And we've been very pleased with the success of the housing developments and we're now in the fourth phase of that. The most expensive by far, both in the gross value and the cost per lot. Now, part of that is, you know, we spent over $800,000 to bring our sewer system up to snuff. And a big part of the expense was making the street outlet to White Hole Road, which was a priority for the council and I think has already improved the quality of life for the people in the existing development in terms of not having everybody bottled up and having various outlets. The success of that program depends on us building houses and selling houses out there. And the vast majority, I mean, we've had all kinds of home buyers and builders, the vast majority have been young families with children. And any realtor will tell you the number one factor in deciding where people with children want to live is the schools. And we are so blessed to have an outstanding school resource officer. A lot of schools, even in rural Iowa, have school resource officers. They're not all created equal. And people are aware of this. Sergeant Geisinger has been recruited by other communities. And it's very important that we hang on to a successful school resource officer. You know, a lot of the things that were discussed at the public meeting last night at the fire hall revolves around costs. And the cost that I want you to keep in mind is the value of having an effective police force. You know, what you don't see are the crimes that were not committed. And a big part of that is getting in touch with and in tune with the students at the school level. You know, if you can reduce bullying, if you can find out problems that need to be nipped in the bud before they become a more serious issue, that's a huge, it's a huge benefit to the community, but in dollars and cents as well. So I could go on and on, but I promised I would be three to five minutes. And so I'm going to wrap it up there. Please know the business community supports this police department and places a high premium on its ability. As was mentioned by the chief, I've been around for 30 plus years. And I remember when this community had a revolving door in terms of the officers coming in and leaving. And that might look cheap on paper, but it is expensive. And I urge you to make tough decisions. I don't envy you folks at all. You have difficult decisions to make, but this is a priority, so thank you much for that.
Thank you.
Okay, four. Any questions?
You guys all have a copy? I can give you a minute to review it, or if you want, I can start talking. So, last time we met, it was discussed that we would have a chat with Chip about this. We did meet with him. Me, a couple council members, the mayor, Ash, Sarah, we were all there. We had a discussion about it. And it was asked of me to provide to you just kind of a comparison of the cost from this current year to next year. So that's what I've done with this form here, just to kind of show what the current cost was of the SRO program last year, or this current school year, this is the one that just ended. And then what it would cost with a cops grant, without a cops grant. And essentially, it's the same proposal that I'm proposing or that I proposed the other night. I'm asking the city to authorize the fifth officer. I'm not asking you to necessarily give me permission to hire that person this second, but just to authorize the positions that I can apply for the grant. The officer would start at $55,000. The benefits, I've estimated that by looking at our other officers and dividing the cost of benefits to their salaries, which is very similar. We have an officer that makes just over $55,000. That comes up to about $27,500. You know, obviously, that number could change depending on what those exact benefit amounts end up costing. But just in an estimation, we'd be looking at $55,000 salary, $27,500 benefits, IPRs, insurance, all those costs. So approximately $82,500 for that position. And then I will apply for the cops grant. We talked about it last meeting. That would give us up to $125,000. They break it down to $41,666 a year. So if you look down into the funding scenarios, essentially, last year, the city would have received $72,171 with the reimbursement for wages, the reimbursement for the vehicle expenses. So this last, the year that we just finished up with, we actually, our officer cost for that year was $40,037. So there was a net surplus there of $29,149 that we did not spend out of those reimbursements. If we were to do this with the cops grant on that second line, the $72,171 would be the 4% increase that the school just last night approved with our contract. So that would be including the wages and the vehicle expenses. So $72,171 would be the reimbursement roughly. That could change the pay on the reimbursements for the car costs. You take that out of the $82,500 and then you add in the $41,600 that we would get from the cops grant if we were to be awarded that, and we would have a net surplus of $31,337. Now, obviously, that's for the first three years. The cops grant would go away at year four and then we would have to figure out a way to fund the rest of that. So the easiest way for me to explain it is, hopefully, we get the cops grant. If we don't, or if we do get the cops grant, and then year four would look like the bottom line. So this is without the cops grant, or year four without the cops grant minus the 4% increases and all that. So the bottom line would be $72,171 for the reimbursement minus $82,500. We wouldn't have the cops grant. So we'd be at a net cost to the city of $10,329. I totally understand that that number may not seem small. But what I would like to point out is the, you know, what we saved from this year, this last year, if that was to be rolled forward, that would actually cost for about those first three years, it'd roughly be about $613 a year if we can do that. So if that is something we can do, I would highly suggest that because if we were to roll that over, we'd essentially pay for that system. If we got the cops grant and we had that, you know, we had that extra $31 a year, I would also recommend the same thing because you could use that over a three-year period. This would literally fund this program for the next nine years, essentially, the overage. Now, obviously, it'll go up, you know, with cost of living and stuff like that, but it'd be pretty close. The other thing that I would like to point out is that with this plan, with the SRO position, they're working during the school year. So roughly, in the three months of the summer, they're off. So that gives us an extra officer to cover vacations. It gives us an extra officer to work in those extra shifts. Now, I can't guarantee that my officers are going to take all of their vacations within that three months, but let's just say they took a quarter of their vacation time during that three months. That would obviously save us some oxygen overtime because we wouldn't have to be paying, currently, we'd have to pay someone extra to do that. So there is a cost savings there. And then also, just looking at it from, you know, from the perspectives of, you know, having that extra officer during the summer, those are our busy months. So it would provide some extra coverage for certain things during that summer month. So I think even though there is the cost of $10,000, when you look at it from what it would do for the community, what it would do for our officers as far as helping with some of those overtime or just being stretched thin because they're working overtime, I think that benefit definitely outweighs the cost. Is there any questions on that part of this? I do have a question, and forgive me, I wasn't here for the last meeting, so, and it's a little late now with the, if the school already approved that contract, but were they still okay if something happens that Katie is removed from the school to help? That's part of the clause. Okay, so we're still good with all that? The only thing that changed in the contract from our previous one was there was a paragraph that essentially said that the term of the contract was a year. There was another paragraph that said the term of the contract was five years. So we've changed that to about five years. And then the cost from the 4% for wages, benefits, all those things. So we still have the, the contract for the last five years, it can be, you know, it can be canceled by either party before that, but there is still a requirement that the city provide a estimate of the expected budget for each year. So we'd still have to provide them a budget next year, say we want to increase this by 4% again next year. We would have to provide them with a budget, they'd have to approve that budget. Otherwise, it would be set at this term. Do you know what I mean? At least these prices.
Yep. We, last year, we all thought we agreed to a five-year and then,
Yeah.
I don't want to say names, but I believe a person at the school caught that there was a minor screw-up where there were one paragraph one year, one paragraph five. Rusty probably wouldn't even have to bring it up. I could be wrong.
No, so we were actually over there at a meeting with Rusty. We were talking about some other things about school SRO stuff. And we started talking about it and we kind of noticed it. And so I think we all, we both kind of noticed it at the same time.
And then to your question too, like if there was a, and hopefully it never happens, but I'll put on my school hat here, if there was like a parry incident or something, I think it would be the other way around where like we would hold Katie to the school more so in that situation.
Sure.
Versus, you know, like if the city needed her. So I think it's both ways in that clause.
Yeah, I mean, she would be a full-time SRO at the school. So she'd be there throughout the school year.
Yeah.
That would be her full-time job. So more likely, she's going to, well, she would be at one of the buildings. She might not be at that particular building. But yeah, that is, that would be her full-time job throughout the school year. During the summer months, we would then get her back on a patrol schedule. So she can help us with overtime, she can do those things during the summer. And then the other thing too to point out is, you know, a lot of times, people take vacations during those breaks from school. Well, those are, you know, the breaks that we have for an SRO too. So having five officers during those breaks allows us to, you know, if an officer wants to take a Christmas vacation or a spring break vacation or something, it's a lot easier to do that with this, you know, with these five officers and that type of setup. So just something to think about. I can't tell you exactly how many vacation hours are going to be used during those times, but I would imagine it's, you know, at least a quarter of the vacation or more. And if you do the cost, I mean, our total cost for vacations right now, if you paid us out hourly for the amount of hours that we get for vacations, it's over $16,000. So if we took a quarter of that during those breaks, then, you know, you're going to get some of that cost back.
Yeah, and I think there was, was there two weeks where you went to Stewart versus SRO? So I mean, I think the school, I could be wrong on that, but the school is well aware of that clause. And they know that it could go both ways. They're well aware of that.
And they've worked well with us. I mean, we didn't hear any complaints.
Yeah.
But we did have to call her back for the shooting incident in overtime. I haven't had a single person say, hey, you know, why was this?
Right.
You know, it was all explained and they all agree with it. When's that, when's that cop, cops, cop grant due? Sorry, I can't say that now tonight. So I would like, what's your timeframe here? I mean, have you, have you just a few days?
Twenty-fifth, so.
So that was kind of the point of having the special meeting. Like I said, and I will do everything I can to get that grant. I think we have a very good chance of getting the grant. I said at the last meeting, there's some things that the federal government is looking for. It's right in their guidebook, rural community, school safety, you know, small departments. Those are who they're awarding money to. So I feel like, you know, if we have a good shot at it, I can't guarantee that we could get it. But even if we didn't, I think the cost is so minimal that, and the benefit that it would give, not only the schools, but also the city. It's, I think it would be well worth the cost.
Can I ask a question?
Just.
Excuse me. And maybe my fellow councilpeople can help me out here because maybe I'm confused. When we approved that, it was a five-zero vote to approve that SRO agreement. You had told us you were going to get part-timers to fill in to cover these shifts.
Sure.
And that was one of the reasons why I voted for it because we weren't going to have to hire a fifth officer, it was going to be covered by issues. What's the reason you couldn't get, were you not paid enough? Did they just not want to work here? What's going on? What happened with that?
I mean, I couldn't tell you. I'd have to ask officers that didn't apply, why they didn't apply.
Sure.
The goal was to try to get like a permanent part-time or a group of part-time officers. I think that's what I had explained to the council, was to try to find a pool of part-time officers. I can give you my answer based on my experience and my assumptions, but I can't give you an answer that would be exact. If I worked for, we have officers that work maybe in like a metro department that live out this way. Those would be some guys that might be looking for extra shifts. Or we have deputies that work for county jobs that might be willing to work. If their current overtime rate at their own departments, because if you look at any department in the state of Iowa, almost all of them are understaffed right now. There's a big shortage of police officers. So if I worked for West Des Moines, let's say, and I don't even know if West Des Moines lets you work extra duty, but let's just say they do. If I'm a West Des Moines officer, I'm making $106,000 overtime at time and a half hourly. You're looking at quite a bit more than what I can afford to pay them. And they've got ample amounts of overtime with their own agency. The last thing you're going to want to do is go work for us for half the cost. We'd rather just work overtime at his own agency. I think that's our main issue is we're, when you're looking for part-time police officers, you're looking for certified officers, you're looking for officers that are experienced. And so you've got to find people that are already, you know, up the chain a little bit. And it's just hard to pay what they're worth. That would be my guess.
And I think we asked the last time, or maybe I did, when did you know you were having an issue with this?
I mean, I think it's an ongoing thing all year throughout the program.
Was it like three months into the program? Or maybe if you come up prior to the budget being set and said, hey, guys, you know, I know I said this. We're having trouble, you know, for these reasons, those are valid reasons, I get it.
Sure.
And we could have looked at that and fixed that into our budget prior to that, prior to it being set. Because again, you know, I didn't know until the last meeting that, you know, I didn't see any wage studies, I didn't see anything prior to that. Just would have been better. I'm not against it, I mean, we all voted for it, you know, based on that assumption, you know. And then when that assumption doesn't happen, and then we're asking for another officer, I'm like, you know, what do I do, you know, I mean, how do I reconcile that? Did I misunderstand something or?
Hey, can I jump in here for two seconds?
Yeah.
And I see what you're saying, Mike, but, and I have had, and you can ask these officers up here. I've had conversations with all these officers too. And one thing that the chief is trying, why he's asking for it, you know, talking to the officers, they're tired. They work, chief couldn't find them the part-time, nobody wanted the part-time job. These guys right here had to fill those gaps in. And then they're tired. I'm surprised that they're not burnt out, maybe they are, I can't speak for you. So I get why you're asking for the fifth officer, I get it, if nobody wants to come and work.
And how about, I do too, Corey, I understand that. But I don't know that if somebody doesn't tell me that, I can't remind them of that. I mean, that's all I'm saying, is I can't, I do not pay any attention because that's not my job to get into your business.
Sure.
I'm not going to run you apart. How do I know what I've done?
So the best way I can answer this, I don't know exactly what month it was. I went through all of the council packets in the last couple of days and literally read through the agendas, read through a bunch of stuff. And I know I read it in the notes on one of the meetings. It would have been prior to the meeting that I had with Russell and Patrick. I was up here, I was expressed, expressing a need for funding issues. I had expressed that we're, you know, needing to have a conversation as a city to figure out some of these issues. And I said that I would meet with two council members to try to have that conversation, and we did. We did, we had two positive meetings on that same topic. So we have been working on this for several months. This isn't like I just woke up yesterday and said, wow, we need to do this. We've been looking at it. We've been trying to find ways to, you know, do this. But then, as you know from the letter that I wrote you guys, there were some changes that happened real fast that obviously, you know, put some of this to a different level of needing to get done. So this, it's not like this wasn't on our radar or it wasn't something that we were, you know, looking at doing, trying to do. And like I said, I'll say it again as many times as I want, as I can. I have submitted a budget proposal at the beginning of the year, as I was requested. That was what I felt we needed for funding. That may not be the same, we might not have the same agreement on that, but I did provide documents to the city saying I need a better budget that would have helped with some of these things. And then I had those meetings, I brought it up as counsel to the council, that those were issues. I then had meetings with council members to discuss those issues. So I don't feel like I haven't been honest with anybody in this room that we need to do some of these things. This is not something that I just decided to do yesterday. So hopefully that answers your question.
To a, to a point, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I know, I know from five years ago, you know, we did a $400,000 bond for you guys. And I knew at that time that wasn't the total answer to anything. I, you know, I knew it wasn't going to fix anything because that money's going to run out, you know. And we didn't have any, we didn't have any discussion in front of the, I know you came up and said we need funding. I'm not a budget guy, I mean, what does that mean? Where's the numbers at? Where was, where was all this stuff through that five years? You know, I didn't, I didn't see any of that. I heard, well, we need a car rotation, we need this, we need that, and that's good. I mean, I'd be happy to give it to you, I think we gave you a fourth officer. We did give you some extra money, we did the $45,055. And I know it's not, I'm not saying that that was the cure-all, but we did what you wanted, we did the SRO. So we did come up, we did do the stuff you requested. Some of it may have taken a little bit longer, but I know other departments that were a long, long time to get stuff for them too. I'm just, when are we going to get to that point where we can, when we can see this, when we're not doing stuff like this, where we have to do budget stuff after the budget's done? Is this going to cure it? Are we going to have those talks where we see all the numbers prior to us finalizing the budget each year? I don't know, I mean, that's what I'd like to see because you get this going and this is, you know, I experienced this in like the six months of my first term, you know.
I would also like to say real quick, when you came as your first term as council member, if you remember, I had a meeting with you where I explained in my office, or at least in our building, I explained to you the concerns that I had with our department funding. I've done that with every council member since they started, since I've been the chief. I am upfront, I am honest, I am transparent with our needs. I told you literally when you had just been elected, that... I told you literally when you had just been elected, the, the issues that I was, I was facing, the funding issues that we had had for many, 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 many years that started before me. So to, to try to say that I'm not being upfront about it, or that I'm not communicating with you about that, I, I feel like that's not true.
I'm not a budget guy.
Okay.
On six months ahead, right?
Sure.
And I don't know.
Sure.
Those numbers. And then I say in the meeting where I'm told, I'm no good. I don't support anybody. That was my six months ahead.
Did we say that you were not good in that meeting?
Yes, yeah. Unfortunately, unfortunately.
I, I didn't even know you at that meeting.
It wasn't you. I'm not saying you.
Said that you were no good.
That's, I'll just leave it. It was one of your officers. It's not no good, but we did support him, you know, and we were trying everything to figure this out.
Well, it wasn't me?
No, I said it wasn't you.
Okay.
No, it wasn't.
So the, the conversation that I'm having with this department is between you and me. And I have not ever said anything like that to you. I have always shown you respect.
I know, I know.
I've always worked with, with you guys on these things. And, you know, the simple truth to this is the last meeting that we had, I provided you guys with, with a, essentially a plea for help. That's all it was. The only numbers I had down were on that proposal for the SRO. The rest of it was, I, I gave you some studies. You can disagree with the studies. I, I'm perfectly fine with anybody disagreeing with me. But as a chief, I'm doing my best to keep the council, to keep the city administrator as informed as possible about the demands and needs that we have. And a lot of those demands and needs are things that have lasted for years. When I first came here as an officer, we were using hand-me-down equipment from other neighboring departments for years. Everything that we wanted to do as far as, oh, we're going to need computers because now we have to write electronic citations. We didn't have the money in that budget. We asked for it. We didn't get it. We had to literally, I had to buy my first patrol computer in my car myself.
Can I make a reference for a second, Chief? And I understand that. I get it.
Your honor.
I do. I just want to get a little.
Mr. Mayor.
I just.
I'd like to raise a point order. We can't have meetings that are run this way. We, we just can't. In a courtroom, attorneys are not allowed to address each other. They address all their remarks to the bench. There's a reason for that because if, if you get this back and forth, you don't have a meeting. You, you just cannot have an effective meeting. So.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Maybe we can talk about it later.
I think. Lovers at the podium needs to make their report. If there's questions, they should answer those questions. But you cannot allow this back and forth. We'll be here all night.
Thanks, ma'am.
And Chief, some people weren't here last night. Can you explain possibly the need of the fifth officer because our town's growing? The new housing, Quick Star, Travel America coming in, all the motels. How much more population we have at night?
I, I mean, I, I think if you just look at it statistically, I'm one of those people, I don't ask for things that I feel that I want. I ask for things that I can try to base on numbers, facts, statistics. And if you look at statistics, it's somewhere around four and a half, or four hundred, four fifty citizens per officer. That's nationwide. Now, obviously that's going to change depending on where you're at. I could pull a city in, in one state and know it's only two hundred. I could pull one in another state and it could be five hundred, whatever. But the point is, uh, we were at four officers, uh, when I first came here. We've been four officers through a lot of growth. So at some point, we're going to need to look at growing. I'm not saying that's right now, but what I think the big misconception here is when we talk about five officers is that this is not five patrol officers. This is four patrol officers and a full-time SRO. So there's a big difference between five full-time patrol officers and four full-time patrol officers in an SRO. What I'm asking for right now is for us to, in order to keep that SRO program full-time is to hire a fifth officer to be a fourth patrol officer. That's what I'm asking for. Now, those other conversations, they're going to have to come up at some point. I don't know if that's next year, if that's two years, ten years. But that's what I'm, what I was trying to do, uh, with last meeting and, and, and with the information I provided is that we need to start having those conversations. That's all I'm saying. You know, I would love to work with the city on figuring out how we can do those things, but we just can't keep ignoring some of these problems.
Hey, you guys are going to have to trust me on this. I know we haven't talked to Chip, but, um, I'm going to go ahead and make that motion that we allow Chief recall to proceed with the cops grant and, uh, hire the fifth officer.
Ready to second?
Officer, is that?
Okay, moves to second. How'd you vote for Patrick?
Yes.
Russell?
Yes.
Dolly?
If we don't get a fifth officer, because you said it could be hard, we don't know if we'll get one or not. Is the plan then to just continue how we have done this in the past, where you just try to get part-time help? And if we can't get part of how we throw a couple of guys to the wolves and don't pay them overtime because they're having to pick up twenty-three hours?
Oh, I can't speak for them. I can speak for the, the general idea of the department, but I think this program is, is important to us enough that we're going to make sure it, it works no matter what we do. But I, I can't speak on behalf of how many hours they're willing to put in and all that kind of stuff. The one thing that I, I do think is important that we all remember, and it's in my, my sheet that I just handed to you guys, our department, and I'm not going to say me, this was a group effort, but our department last year was able to give this community a full-time SRO. And in addition to that, a twenty-nine thousand dollar surplus for that program. So we gave the community a full-time SRO. We also made money doing it. It did not cost the city of Stewart anything to do this. And the fact that we're having this conversation on why, uh, you know, should I ask my officers to continue to work harder to make that happen? I really don't understand because we literally, uh, should not have any issue doing this.
I understand. I'm, I'm saying like, it was unfair if they're, they're working crazy hours.
Sure.
That we're not, they're not getting paid for it. So I'm just saying like, in that plan, maybe this is the next agenda item or moving forward, is that something that we need to look at as well? And let us tell we're throwing, if we're throwing someone in sixty, seventy hours a week and they're not getting paid for twenty or thirty hours of them. I mean, you get what I'm saying? Like, I think, I hate to have them get burnt out.
Oh, I don't want decisions to get burnt out either. But what I'm, what I think ultimately, if we continue at the, at the pace that we're at, I think you're going to find that they're not going to continue to do it. If you want to ask Daniel and Shane work the majority of those hours, if you want their opinion, I would have no problem with them giving their, and I don't want to speak for them.
And maybe that's something. Maybe that's, maybe that's a different, maybe that's a different discussion.
Wait, wait a minute. No, we already got a motion and.
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
Yeah.
And are we good with this? I, I, I mean, I get it. It's ten thousand a year-ish. If we don't get it, if we get it, we're fantastic for three years, but we talked about this. Uh, in, with this, sorry. I, I mean, I get this, this whole, but at the time, I want this with the couch grant, I get this. But I'm just, me, we've set a budget. Is this going to kill us? I don't know when it would even start with a fifth officer. Obviously, we would need to look at in the future, next budget, raising everyone else's with some sort of pay scale, like we don't have other, other departments. I'm just wondering like, timing wise, are we okay with doing this? Again, I'm not setting our budget. So are we?
I'll answer you. So you can do it if you're willing to spend down the general fund reserves of the city. I'll give that answer. The budget for FY twenty-six is already done.
I, yeah, I understand.
So everybody knows that.
Okay.
Could you be looking for this to start right away, right? If you got it?
I think the, the goal would be to have this position.
About the school year?
For the school year.
Okay.
Yes.
Call off.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
There's a couple more seats up here.
All right. So, so what, what I, uh, I, I wasn't clear. I met with the, the chief and the folks that noted. What I, what I did not have was a, a clear breakout on the costs. So what I've done is taken a, a general approach to what, that's impossible to see. To what the, to what the city's overall budget has been. So that I started off with some history. So except at one, the, uh, the first page right behind the cover, starts at the left, lists the fiscal years. Then the spreadsheet lists out the city's historic valuation. Twelve years ago in fiscal year fourteen fifteen, valuation, taxable valuation, say the valuation which levies are applied. That was fifty-six point six million. That's in the column F on, on the, the handout. The historic city levies are in the next section in the, in the center of the page. So in many of the historic years, the city's levy has been in more distant past before the growth you've experienced from the housing developments was more in the range of seventeen to nineteen dollars per thousand for the left rate. That's listed out in column, column I. The element of the city's levy that drives TIP collection, which I'm extremely focused on that given the cost of the most recent housing base. The city has to get that to be higher for the levy that's in column G. That's the levy amount that funds operations. That piece of the city's levy, uh, drives TIP revenues. The TIP isn't part of, I hate to say it, but it's a part of every discussion that Stewart has to consider. Uh, the debt levy is collected on TIP. It's, it's, um, agnostic on whether, what the TIP debt is per year because you get to collect your debt levy on TIP valuation records. Then, uh, the calculated operating, uh, dollars from your property tax levy. This is operating property tax dollars only. That's broken out in column K. Here where that hand is on the, on the screen. And you can see what I spent historically. The city has relied pretty heavily principally in, in five different fiscal years from one type, uh, type revenue sources or funding sources. That, that's broken out in column L is in Lima. So the first one there, the three hundred and fifty thousand shown in column L was a transfer from the sewer fund in fiscal year sixteen seventeen. Another transfer from sewer principally in fiscal year nineteen twenty. Eighty-five thousand from TIP is in that year. Something, uh, a bit off topic, but the city hasn't adjusted sewer rates since two thousand and ten, which is pretty incredible that the sewer fund still has the funds to cover these transfers. The sewer costs have gone up. The user rates have to go up. It's just hate, and it's unpopular to say that, but it's reality. What's also been included are the other one ten transfers in column L. There are transfers in from TIP that fund, and this is, uh, all valid, of course, to fund cer- certain city operating costs. There are also a couple of, of, uh, bond issue proceeds that are included in those numbers in column L. But I, I would just respectfully encourage the council to try to avoid a situation where you do bond issues to fund operating costs. That bond issue in two thousand and twenty, the six point two million that refunded three bond issues and funded the four thousand for the police. That's hard to do that when you're having a, in light of like trying to keep a reasonable levy. I know the council is very focused on having a reasonable, uh, property tax levy. That's why you've lowered the levy historically. You can't fund a bond issue for operating costs and fund equipment that are needed for the streets, for police, or fire, or EMS. I don't, your levy would be, I think, at a not tolerable level, level for the city. So what's proposed in here are funding sources for operating costs from cash on hand through fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-nine. And then from just basic operating revenues, property tax revenues after that. So that's kind of that framework that I've tried to use. Uh, any, any questions on the background here on the first page?
So basically what you're saying, Chip, we need to re-burn something. We need to kind of.
Yes.
Like flip something here a little bit. We're, we're not bonding. Because that's, you're, you're saying that's, that's bad news bears.
It's bad news.
Do that. So we, we're going to have to, at some point, go through a growing pain, maybe just a little, and just flip that over where.
So I'm going to seem like I'm going to contradict myself. It's, it's good news. What you can do that works is the annual insurance borrowing. That lowers the city's levy. That, that's principally right here. When you see the levy drop from sixteen dollars, seventy cents down to fourteen and change. It's now a backup to fifteen and a half. That is a principal reason for that drop in the levy.
And now tell us the values.
That's always bad news.
That's a good.
I, I understand that, but that's something that the proposal, that could go up and we're talking fifteen percent-ish minimum.
It was, it was a, it's, if you calculate it out, it's about a two dollar and forty cent, two dollars, dollars forty cents per thousand of a levy change. Bonding for the insurance cost of two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and thirty, it's two hundred and fifty in your debt levy versus, um, using a debt levy. Why, why is that a benefit? That seems really strange that you can bond and have a lower levy. It's, here, here's where it, why it works. Because that, your debt service levy is able to be applied from that TIP valuation, that sixty-three million shown in column G, when you can apply that levy towards sixty, almost sixty-four million in valuation. I don't care what your cost, what your interest costs are, you're going to have a lower levy with that. That's a lot of wood to chop with that, with that, those dollars from that levy. That's why the, you can have a lower levy if you're doing a bond issue for annual insurance. You pay it off quick. That's why it is more cost efficient too instead of over a number of years.
But that is one of the things that could be on the.
It was on the top. It was proposed to be eliminated this year in legislative session. It wasn't eliminated. It could be next year. It might not be.
So that's, you know, considering additional, what, two dollars or something?
Two dollars and forty cents.
Onto our current levy, just for insurance?
Just insurance.
What if they take away anything to, for our ability to get TIP? Or secure all the TIP? What, what would that do?
That's a doomsday scenario for the city. That is.
And was that on the, was that on the?
There was a proposal that would take, um, five dollars and forty cents out. So there's a school uniform levy that's statewide. All school districts in the state apply. That's, it's a five dollar and forty cent levy. There was a proposal that would remove that from the TIP calculation for all TIP districts statewide. It was approved by the Senate, by the whole body.
So it was close?
Maybe not. It was, it was close.
It was close.
The House did not approve it. I think a lot of people started and raised heck of that.
What would that do for us?
So that, that in dollar terms reduced the city's TIP about three hundred and forty-five thousand per year. If you have to then implement a debt service levy for that, that would be a levy increase of about three dollars and fifty cents for the city just on a year, one year basis.
Now, we do have maybe some small good news, right? Our valuation seems to go up. That's the money in our pocket.
Good.
If, if you kept the levy the same, they have, it much less increased, but. And then we do drop the bond from five years ago this next.
Yes.
This year. So I, I don't know how much that is on.
That's about ninety thousand in principal and interest per year. I think the budget for next year FY twenty-six did not include a debt levy for that. It's taken paid for by cash. So there is not a levy in place for your upcoming budget for that last one.
Yes.
So, um, that's good news. So you're, it's, it's done.
Right.
We don't want to do it again.
Yeah.
I mean, so, yeah, we got it. We got those two things going for us with our levy, but if any of these pass, that's really bad.
And I, I.
And then we're going to spend down our, our reserves now. So you got to take that into consideration. So how does that, I mean, that obviously could hurt us, you know? I mean, anything could hurt us, you know?
Absolutely.
On there because.
There are factors outside of the city's control.
Right.
This is our part.
Yeah, that's the city.
Can't you go land on it?
You know, if you don't know, then you got to make the best educated guess. You know, but once we start getting some of these, if we're able to, uh, get some of these lumbold stuff paid. But once we start getting some of these, if we're able to, uh, get some of these Womboldt stuff paid off, and that's about three years, right? In about three years, sure that stuff will drop off?
Three more fiscal years, if you count fiscal year twenty-six as year one, it's four years. It's through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-one.
And then that one third that, uh, general fund's missing because of the TIP, that starts coming back again, right?
That's right.
We just gotta get there, hopefully not go bankrupt.
That's right. That'd be nice. So, so what's shown with that column and the arrow, uh, at the bottom, that's, that's the, and that's shown in column N, is Nancy on the, uh, exhibit one. That's the city's historic general fund balance, the last two years of what's reflected in the, in the budget. You can see those years in the, right there in the, the blue rectangle, and fiscal, those two fiscal years are fiscal years eighteen and nineteen, that the, uh, city tax dollars for operations those two years were only, just call it round numbers, around two hundred thousand dollars. I don't know how the city made it through those, those years. That's nothing to operate on. So you can see that's why the, you had the, you had to have the transfer, not have to, but it came as a transfer in from sewer the next year to recover the general fund. Again, sewer can't keep doing that without raising sewer rates.
Peter, I'm Paul, right?
It is. Yep.
So would it be almost fair to say, Chip, come two thousand and twenty-nine, when you're saying that we'll be in a lot better shape, would it be fair to say that we hit the, the hard reset button on that, where we're using more of that money towards operations and less using the TIP towards other things that we've been doing? So that's where I'm getting that flip-flop, and, you know, where we need to take more of that money and spend it on the operations and not.
That's a, that's what I'm at on here. That's certainly a, a good, a good approach. The great, I'll say to you, the great thing the city has is that you have a lot of TIP that doesn't have a sunset. And you are one of the, the rare cities that has so much TIP that doesn't have a sunset. Some will be sunsetting, but, um, you still have a lot, you can still use a fair amount of TIP, have a good amount of funding for operations. I know every department, police included, and streets and everyone is looking, look for more budget dollars. Uh, but perhaps slightly moderating, moderating the use of TIP. Absolutely keep using it, look at all the good that that's.
Well, it's, it's gonna get us that money, that extra, because if you don't have that growth, if we didn't have that growth out there, then we, we wouldn't be able to collect on it. I mean, it's, it's, it's just that double-edged sword, you know? If you spend the money, it's, it's gotta go off for a little bit, the S U K N O fund works a little bit. If you can get through and pay it off, and we have that money coming in, uh, from that.
I'm gonna spend money, make money, keep doing.
Yeah. Well, yeah, you're, yeah, you're right.
Yep. Uh, so kind of tipping that approach of looking ahead, uh, some things to consider. These next two pages I'll go through very briefly. But this page lays out the, uh, general obligation debt and development agreement payments existing only of, of the city. I've got it in, in, uh, chart form, it's a little easier to read. But there are a couple of, there, as part of the two thousand and twenty replenishing bonds, this, we, we shortened the payment on, there were three bond issues that were refunded. We shaved two years off of two of those bond issues. That, by cutting off maturity years, having higher debt service per year, that caused the amount paid from TIP to increase. And looking back on that now and recognizing the cost of Womboldt, third edition overall base four, uh, those payments from TIP are, are, we, they're too high. So what, what I'm, I've tried to emphasize is keeping the operating levy at a slightly higher level. There are two years coming up in fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-nine, the blue shaded years, where the, just the bond issue debt service is about a million nine seventy per year. That, if you include the development agreement payments, that takes the city TIP payments in those two, two years to about two million two eighty-three. Those two years are, uh, the most challenging years in the, in the upcoming budget years. So what that looks like, that, that's what I just wanna get on everyone's radar. What that looks like in graph form is on the following page, Exhibit Three. The same numbers in the prior page. The gray, uh, amounts relate to the principal payments, blue is interest. And there's, the city's paying off a ton of principal payments, and there's not a whole lot of interest expense. So that's a good sign that you have, we've been ramped a lot in low interest rates on the debt. The green parts of the stack part charts are the development agreement payments. Here are those two years in fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-nine. If we can just get by those two years, we'll be in really good shape after that. So, uh, here's a, a couple ideas for a path forward. And I told the, the chief, and I, what I was gonna do, I, I, in the time allowed, I don't have the capacity to focus on one department. So what I've laid out are just a broad overall city operating budget dollars. A change in operating budget from property taxes only, and I've isolated out, um, on Exhibit Five, I've isolated out two different segments in, in upcoming budget years. I haven't shown fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, the budget's already done for that year, so I've set that aside. The three years with elevated TIP payments are the first three years in this, uh, spreadsheet on Exhibit Four. What I've assumed are a slightly higher, not, not much higher, but slightly higher, uh, TIP valuation in those three years, just because you have to have that valuation to pay the TIP debt. I've assumed then in the center rows where the city levy is listed out in, in columns G, H, and I, I've assumed the city levy what, that would adjust from your current fifteen dollars and fifty cents up to sixteen dollars and seventy-five cents. I've got that isolated out on the next page, what that is on various property owners for a cost. So I'll get to that in a moment. Uh, the budget dollars that result with this breakout in, for its fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, the budget dollars that result are listed out in column K. Transfers in that are consistent with prior historic, um, references in the general fund in column L. Change in operating budget dollars versus fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, that's noted below the arrow in column N. So the, the first, just please, it's, I can't, again, have all this written, so. The first row with the change in budget dollars of a hundred and fourteen thousand two eighty-five, that's fiscal year twenty-seven, the next is fiscal year twenty-eight, the next is fiscal year twenty-nine. So you can see there's a change in dollars for operating budget expenses of a hundred and fourteen thousand in the first year, a hundred and twenty-one thousand in the second year, a hundred and fifty-six thousand in FY twenty-nine. But not knowing specifically what the police were, were gonna ask for, this is intended to be for citywide expenses only, and this is only the amounts paid from property taxes. So this assumes a levy adjustment of a, a dollar twenty-five per thousand. So what that means, I'll skip out to the next page. Table B on Exhibit Five shows what the levy impact of a dollar twenty-five is for various property valuations. I'll just start, simplest is to start with a hundred, hundred thousand dollar assessed home. That's rolled back for property tax purposes to forty-seven thousand four thirty-two. Applying that dollar twenty-five levy change to that forty-seven thousand four hundred, that's a monthly tax impact to about four dollars and ninety-four cents. If it's a three hundred thousand dollar home, take that times three. A four hundred thousand dollar home, take that times four. So that's, that's the levy impact, just based on that change, isolating the impact and the change only. Okay, then the other assumptions back on the prior page on Exhibit Four. I've laid out, here's, I think, where the good news starts to come in. The last three rows there, fiscal year thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, toward the bottom of the page. I've assumed, which, which I hope is fairly conservative, three percent valuation growth. I've assumed your levy drops down closer to what you have, um, in the current year. Drops down from a fif- sixteen dollars and seventy-five cents. I'm trying to lay out a plan, like, here's what the levy looks like after this three years is passed. The three years ending June thirty, two thousand and twenty-nine. So if you dropped the levy a dollar per thousand to fifteen dollars and seventy-five cents in fiscal year thirty, then comparing that change, uh, canceling perpetually back to your point about more folk being able to have more dollars for operations in column N, there's the change in operating dollars versus fiscal year twenty-six. Two hundred thousand more in fiscal year thirty versus fiscal year twenty-six. So it's, it's, uh, I've gotta consider it's a four-year skip in years there. Uh, two hundred and seventy-six thousand for the next year, and then three hundred and nineteen thousand in fiscal year thirty-one, thirty-two. Because the city has such a useful tool with your, uh, available TIP valuation, assuming the legislature doesn't take that away, I've assumed your TIP valuation would stay at sixty to sixty-two million in those future years. That's a big unknown, so I don't know. I'm sure the city can find projects to fund with those TIP dollars. I, I'm sure not gonna show that going down to five million, because you've, you've done too much good with the TIP gap. But I have showed it as being reduced. So, but even with that reduction, the less, uh, valuation, less TIP payments, debt service payments that are due each year, that allows more valuation for operations in that, uh, second column there where the, the hand is on the top screen. So just look at that change from the assumed amount for fiscal year twenty-nine, thirty-seven point three million, and the tax base for operations that would jump up in this hypothetical scenario to fifty-seven point three million in fiscal year thirty-one, thirty-two. Even with you keeping sixty million of your tax base to TIP. So th- these are just scenarios, so I am presenting them for you to consider as you evaluate the police budget, streets, parks, EMS, fire, city hall, everything you have to consider. So I'm happy to, please read that footnote at the bottom of the screen on Exhibit Four. If legislation does anything with TIP, all of these numbers are wrong. So.
Well, I appreciate you doing that. As a holistic approach for, for everybody, um, because we don't, we focus on everybody.
Of course, no. So it's, I, it's my role to get it in front of you, and then you guys decide how do you proceed from there and, and, uh, what you wanna do or not do.
Right. Very simple.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Appreciate your work.
You bet.
Thank you.